The 2022 meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley? Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here. Commissioners, do we have a motion to excuse Commissioner Hanley, Pro Tem Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to excuse Commissioner Hanley, who could not be here due to a work conflict.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Up next, we have approval of the agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion on the agenda? Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we approve the agenda as presented with one modification, that we remove item eight and renumber the following items appropriately.
Thank you. I'm just notating here. Do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. I have no announcements this evening, so that brings us to boards and committees. We have one appointment. Do we have a motion on this appointment? Pro Tem Mayor?
Thank you. I move to appoint Travis Gerhart to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending in zero six zero one twenty-four.
And is there a second? Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Pro Tem Mayor, any discussion?
Just thank you for stepping up and serving.
Any discussion, Commissioner Bonzal? Any additional? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Up next, we have public comment. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address. And a note for the public, the chance for the commission to respond is at the very end of the meeting during Commissioner comments. Go ahead and approach the center podium if you'd like to make a public comment.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ryan Stock. I live at 1085 Woodridge Avenue, and I'm a professor in Northern Michigan University's Department of Earth, Environmental, and Geographical Sciences. On December 20th, 2021, the City of Marquette passed a bold and urgent climate action resolution that strives for carbon neutrality by 2050. The resolution builds upon years of patient but powerful efforts the city is already taking to address climate change locally and ensure our future resiliency. However, missing from this document is any awareness, let alone a strategy to rectify how the city's financial investments drive the climate crisis. Now, if I understand correctly the figures from the annual comprehensive financial support of 2021 document, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the city has investments amounting These investments are being managed by the Investment Advisory Board. The city has also invested in pension funds managed by the Police Fire Pension Board and the Municipal Employees Retirement System of Michigan Board, or MERS. According to city manager Karen Kovacs in an email to a student group called Divest NMU on October 7th, 2022, she said, "At a quick glance of our investment portfolios, we don't appear to have significant exposure in the fossil fuel space." Now, whether significant or not, we welcome the opportunity to work with Karen Kovacs and city staff to determine the extent of fossil fuel exposure and explore lucrative solutions. However, the fact remains that the City of Marquette is indeed financially supporting the fossil fuel industry through city investments. I believe this to be completely inconsistent with commitments made in the 2021 Climate Action Resolution that commits to carbon neutrality by 2050. Scientists and economists predict a whopping $900 billion in stranded fossil fuel assets in the next few years as the world caps global surface temperature warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius. Numerous recent studies by financial firms have demonstrated that firms receive a higher return on investments from green investments than fossil fuel investments. So think of divestment as an economic opportunity for the city. As city commissioners, I implore you to stop funding climate chaos. Get Marquette on track to implement sustainable and profitable solutions to the climate crisis. Divest city finances from the fossil fuel industry. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, my name is Molly Miller. I live on 1218 Second Street in Marquette. I came here to speak last year about the climate emergency declaration, so I'm not going to speak too much about climate change today because everyone has already heard me talk about that, but I am here to speak in favor of fossil fuel divestment. The fossil fuel industry has identified divestment as a threat to their destructive industry, and so we know that this is something that hasn't been trivial so far and that any money divested from the fossil fuel industry in the future will only add to that impact. Not only can divestment be an effective mitigation strategy towards climate change, it's also economically feasible. So many sources have shown that divestment can be economically favorable. One report from MSCI compared indexes that included the fossil fuel industry and indexes that excluded the fossil fuel industry, and the indexes excluding the fossil fuel industry performed better. There was also a report by the Corporate Knights that analyzed institutions that had already divested recently, and it showed that not divesting earlier actually lost them money. One example of this is the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation committed to divesting fairly recently, and in their report, they suggested that this foundation lost $1.9 billion from not divesting from the fossil fuel industry earlier. So as the world transitions to green energy, investing in the fossil fuel industry can pose economic risk. And I also wanted to say that I know this is a process and something that takes time, not something that can happen immediately. I didn't come here today expecting any commitment or anything immediate. I just wanted to hopefully garner some support for fossil fuel divestment and potentially listen to suggestions or questions that people might have. This is something Ann Arbor has already committed to, so there is precedent for fossil fuel divestment in Michigan. And then additionally, there's many other public and private institutions that have committed to divestment, and some of them have taken many years to do so, and when they were first asked to, they didn't because they were worried that it wasn't a financially positive thing to do, but now those institutions have since divested. So I think it's feasible. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name's Marley Wolf. I live at 2214 Longyear Avenue. Great things were already said by Molly and Ryan. I just wanted to take this time for all of us to recognize that we did make a commitment to carbon neutrality by 2050, and that is not going to be possible if we continue to put our money into these companies that are killing our earth and killing our future. So I just hope that you guys recognize this and start taking the process and steps towards this divestment from a city level.
My name is Piper Guest. I live at 2214 Longyear Avenue, and I just wanted to come here tonight and say that divestment from fossil fuels is actually an investment on our future, not only the citizens of Marquette, but also the stewards of the earth. I ask that the city reallocates its investments from fossil fuels and puts that money towards renewable energy solutions for the greater Marquette area. I think that we should not be investing in the very industry that is wreaking havoc on our air, water, land, and home. Thank you for your time.
Hi there. My name is Matt Ludenberger. I'm at 1406 Garfield Ave, City of Marquette. One, I did not expect this to come up, but I want to say that there are still open solar panels from the Board of Light and Power. So as I was speaking about Lake View Rena, this kind of dovetails really nicely in how many Board of Light and Power solar panels does the city actually own or rent, or however they want to break it down. So from what I understand, there's a lot available still. Please think of that as a possible solution that is ready to go tomorrow. Now, that's a thought, and I'm going to change gears to why I came up here. Because I'm running for one of your two seats. I also applied for another job, but I come up because back in August, I got served an arrest warrant. So the police don't care about what I'm about to say, the prosecutors don't care about what I'm going to say, the judge could care less about what I'm going to say. I was driving down Norwood Ave and slid off the side of the road. Car was in the quote ditch, and that's whatever happens in December was when this happened, so it's frosty over. The reason I'm bringing this up is Norwood Ave goes from cement to dirt, back to cement. So I don't know if this is a city property thing or if it's an NMU property thing. Again, I'm applying for both of these jobs. Hopefully, somebody will care. But like I said, police don't care. They just see a car on the side of the road. Prosecutor doesn't care. They think, here's the police report, we're going to move forward. Nobody really cares about my plight, and I get that. That's fine. Please, nobody should care. There are well over 100 potholes on that road. It's a dirt road that never gets graded, has never been improved, and yet Sugarloaf, just right down the street, was resurfaced. That dirt, that asphalt could have been dumped on Norwood Ave. Lincoln, not Lincoln, McClellan was just resurfaced. Again, a lot of that dirt, you could probably pull a bunch of limestone off of the old power plant at the We Energies and put that in that road to minimize the potholes. I'm not saying what I did was right, wrong, or I'm here to debate it. I'm here to pay for the damages, and that's going to be what happens. But I'm here to ask, who controls that road? Is there any sign we can put up that says going from dirt to cement, or going from cement to dirt? Is there any streetlights we can put up in there? Again, I don't know if this is you guys or if this is NMU, but you're the seats that will be able to talk to the other suits. So please do. Please fix Norwood Ave and invest in some solar panels. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, I'm Casey Stevens. I live at 528 West Bluff Street, and I'm just going to reiterate some things that were already said about divestment. You guys made a commitment to sustainability. Divestment is a crucial step in accomplishing this, and it's something that needs to become a priority. It's not something that's going to happen overnight. It's something that you guys need to plan for, and it's something that we need to plan for as soon as possible. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing no further public comment, public comment is now closed. Moving on to public hearings, of which we have three. Item two, request to rezone parcel of NMU-owned property. This does require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could we have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on September 6th, 2022, to consider rezoning a 1.1 acre parcel of land with frontage on Center Street and which is owned by Northern Michigan University, NMU, and zoned as part of the Civic Zoning District, which is appropriate for NMU property. This parcel includes the former president's house and was recently split from the parcel with an address of 1321 Wright Street. A new address will be assigned to this parcel in the near future. NMU wishes to sell the property as a residence, and to accomplish this, NMU is requesting the zoning district be changed to medium-density residential. The Planning Commission, after conducting a public hearing, made the following motion. It was moved by M Larson and seconded by S Mittelfelt and carried seven to zero that after conducting a public hearing and review of the application and staff report for 05-rez-09-22, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the community master plan and meets the requirements of the Land Development Code, Section 54.1405, and hereby recommends that the City Commission approve 05-rez-09-22 as presented. Under the procedures of Section 54.1405 of the Land Development Code, the City Commission, upon recommendation from the Planning Commission, has scheduled this public hearing to consider rezoning the parcel as part of the medium-density residential zoning district. Fiscal effect, upon approval of the rezoning, the property would be added to the tax roll. Recommendation, following the public hearing, adopt Ordinance 715, rezoning the 1.1 acre NMU parcel as medium-density residential in accordance with Section 54.1405 of the Land Development Code. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. We'll go ahead and open a public hearing in a moment. Members of the public wishing to speak on this item have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and physical address. Public hearing is now open. Come on, approach the center podium.
Hello. My name is Jim Toms, and I represent NMU on this parcel split. I don't really have anything to add to what Kyle has stated, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Just want to make sure we've got the clock working for the next one. Thank you. Anyone else for the public hearing?
I wouldn't.
That was under three minutes. Anyone else for the public hearing? All right, seeing no further comments for the public hearing, public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, we have a motion on this item. Commissioner Hill?
I move that we adopt Ordinance 715, rezoning the 1.1 acre NMU parcel as medium-density residential in accordance with Section 54.1405 of the Land Development Code.
And do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Any discussion, Commissioner Hill?
No, I think it's understood and appreciate bringing the property back onto the tax rolls.
Commissioner Bonzal, anything to add?
No, no further comment.
Any other Commissioners? All right. City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Motion passes six to zero. Up next, we have another public hearing, request to rezone 221 and 225 West Park Street. This also will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could we have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. On August 16th, 2022, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing for the proposed rezoning of two parcels of land owned by one party, addressed as 221 and 225 West Park Street, from medium-density residential zoning districts to Third Street Corridor District zoning. After the presentation of the staff file review and analysis, applicant testimony, and a public hearing, the Planning Commission made the following motion. It was moved by N. Frischkorn, seconded by A. Andres, and carried four to one that after conducting a public hearing and review of the application and staff report with attachments for 04-rez-08-22, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed rezoning is not consistent with the community master plan and does not meet the requirements of the Land Development Code, Section 54.1405, and hereby recommends that the City Commission deny 04-rez-08-22 because it is inconsistent with the community master plan. Yes votes from Andres, Williams, Frischkorn, and Larson, and no vote from W. Primo. Under the procedures of Section 54.1405 of the Land Development Code, this public hearing was scheduled to consider rezoning the parcel to Third Street Corridor zoning districts. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, following the public hearing, deny the request to rezone the 221 and 225 West Park Street parcels as recommended by the Planning Commission because such rezoning is not consistent with the community master plan and does not meet the requirements of the Land Development Code. Alternatives, adopt Ordinance 716, rezoning the properties.
All right. Public hearing is now open. Members of the public wishing to speak on this item, three minutes if you'd like to speak. Approach the center podium.
Michelle Butler, 3132 Island Beach Road. I'm here representing, well, two entities, Van Gogh's Pizza and then Park Third Incorporated, which is the property corporation for the situation at hand. For many, many years, we've used a portion of 221 and 225 West Park, the back areas for overflow, employee parking, snow storage in the winter. For whatever reasons, how it wasn't included in the Third Street Corridor, I really don't know. You know, maybe negligence from not being asked on our part, I can't say that. But we are prepared to do whatever is possible because parking is of the essence in that area, and so is snow storage. If we aren't able to use that space, it will hurt my neighbors because we have a really good, solid relationship. White's Party Store plows their snow into part of the parking that we own behind White's Party Store because we also run into the Village Shopping Center. We'll lose significant parking, which is of essence on Third Street. It's critical that we all work together to try and figure out how we can maintain parking in our community. We all know that that's first and foremost all the time. I mean, when the DDA came in and they asked us to join the district, you know, parking was one of the big selling points for myself and my partners, who have significant property and pay additional taxes to help support the DDA. We really feel that we are more than prepared to put deed restrictions on the property. I have met with Chad Wester from Marquette County Tigadale. I've actually shared a copy of what the deed restrictions could look like in regards to us using that property strictly for overflow parking and then snow storage in the winter. We would be very mindful, because I know the one neighbor that's not happy with us, that the plow people are very careful not to get that snow too high or too close to the back property line that abuts the neighbor that's not happy. I think that it's a solid solution, and then if anything were ever to happen and we were not to own the property, it could resort back to the residential zoning if that's what the city would like. That would be written in the deed restriction. And I'm available to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the public hearing?
My name is Jeremy Hansen. I own properties 926 and 924, which are the Fossburner Swanson Funeral Home and the Marquette Embroidery Building, directly across the street from Michelle. So I'm here to offer my support in what she is trying to obtain with her properties. Throughout, probably almost my 30 years in being in business in what I do, we've had a great relationship, not only between Michelle's properties, Stucko's, Jamie, I think she's here from White's Party Store. We've all worked together very closely as far as allowing people to park on off times. For example, Friday night, my parking lot typically is full with Van Gogh's people. They're always cordial. They text me, there's not an issue. But I think my point is that it works both ways, where my people during the daytime oftentimes will park over across the street. And I think by removing this, it would drastically decrease the friendliness and I think the availability that not only tourists have, our local people, patrons, have towards parking. I served on the DDA. I was the chair of the DDA for a couple of terms, and I know parking's always been an issue in this community. And I think, you know, the parking structures, everything we've tried to do in the DDA certainly are beneficial, but Third Street's always been extremely tough and very unique on that standpoint. So I think with situations like what we have, with Michelle being able to keep what she does have allows us to be able to function and maintain adequate parking for people in the community. We're, you know, we're private property owners. We're not part of the Tiff District, as you guys are well aware of. So I think we're offering our parking at any time to surrounding businesses without, you know, being taxed on it, obviously, in this area. We're privately paying for these. We're privately funding these parking lots. We're maintaining them. We're keeping them up. So I think if that's removed, it's really going to change the flow of traffic in that block, not only the snow removal. And I don't want to be in a situation where we're having to really monitor who's parking where. And I think if we remove this option that we have where Michelle's at, it affects my business, it affects Stucko's, it affects Jamie at White's. So I just ask for your consideration on really understanding the uniqueness of the Third Street Corridor. Again, I was in on the DDA when that master plan came to be. I think it was the, I forget, was it the Gibbs? I forget the one that we contracted. But I think there was a few oversights there, and this certainly being one of them on making sure that we maintain what we have. So, thank you.
Anyone else for the public hearing?
Hello. My name is Jeff Calery. I live at 229 West Park Street. I have owned property for the last 30 years, and I've resided there for the last 40. I'm opposed to this rezoning. She rezoned it herself, actually, but I'm opposed to this for it's not fitting in with the city, the master plan, for one. The other thing is the multiple uses that granting a Third Street corridor gives to the owner. Deed restrictions and whatnot doesn't mean you can't turn around and sell it in a week. One of the things that you can't do with a Third Street corridor is you don't have parking. You can't have parking in it. Okay? So if it's on Third Street corridor, she can't have parking there anyway. I doubt if the town's going to go broke over a couple of spots that are, it's ugly back there, what she's done. And the disgruntled neighbor, I said, by the way. I also don't think that the property lines, the way they are, that there has to be a buffer between residential and the commercial lots or the commercial district, Third Street corridor, whatever it is. And that can't happen because the property line runs about three inches from dwelling on the property at 225, or 221, what is it? 225. And I don't see how that could work with the dimensions that are required to put that kind of buffer in there, which is fencing. She'd have to put it through her living room on that house practically. In the wintertime, her snow removal consists of plowing and piling it over my fence, which is totally destroyed. And she's been doing it for years, and she's, oh, I don't know that they're doing it. And it's like, well, take a look at your property sometime. Take a look at mine. It's destroyed. I mean, I'm 61, I'm living in my golden years now, and I got to look at that, you know? I don't care about her little touristy, the funeral home, funeral home's not going to go out of business if she doesn't... You know, I don't care about her little touristy, or the funeral home, funeral home's not going to go out of business if she doesn't get parking. I don't see how. And I know that parking may be premium, but not in my backyard, please, for goodness sake. It's just not right. If we allow that, is that allowed anywhere else in the city? People can plow, there's snow piled over other people's fences, and just do it and get away with it forever? You know, please make her follow the rules. We do, we have to follow the rules, she has to follow the rules. It's just totally dereliction of duty on her part to not understand what she's doing. You know, it's, it's just not right for our, for our neighborhood, you know? I, I'd like the neighborhood put back to the way it was with the fence between the Third Street Corridor and the commercial property at two-twenty-one, like it's supposed to be by, by code. Thank you.
Anyone else for the public hearing?
Uh, hello, Robert Crown, thirty-one-oh-eight Island Beach Road. Uh, I am one of the corners of Van Gogh's. It's not just Michelle Butler. But we are a business that works with our neighboring businesses. We're very cooperative. I'm not out policing the lot saying, hey, you're going to the florist, don't come in here. We're very cooperative. We know parking's at a premium, um, and we've always worked well with each other. Closing that back lot even in the summer fills up the street, fills up our lot. People don't come into our businesses because they think, oh, it's too busy, we're not going to go in there. So it, it's already had a, a negative effect on, probably not just ours, but I'm sure White's and others as well. So, um, consider it, we're more than willing to make sure that this snow is piled in a way that doesn't touch that property. We've offered to make repairs to his fence. We just want to be good neighbors and good business owners, so, thanks.
Anyone else for the public hearing?
My name is Jamie Strand, I live at three-seventeen West Park. Um, I'm here because I own White's Party Store. Um, we share a lot with Van Gogh's across Park Street and also with Flower Works. For as long as I've owned the building, we have worked together to make, um, parking and snow removal workable and safe in that small lot. The overflow lot across the street plays a key part in making this work for the summer during the tourist season and in the winter during, as they already mentioned, um, during, for snow removal. And that's been the case for years. Um, it also alleviates a great deal of congestion at this very busy corner, which keeps getting busier every summer, as I think we all would agree on that. It's a big deal to lose these lots in question. Without access, this poses a tremendous parking problem for all of us in the neighborhood, not just Van Gogh's. The lack of parking directly impacts other businesses, residents, as Rob brought up, um, just, um, Third, or Third Street, Park Street, on the other side of Park Street, it just becomes very congested. Um, this will also no doubt translate into a much larger problem during the winter months with both decreased parking because of snow banks and then also snow removal issues. I don't know what the answer is, um, it sounds like the deed restriction might be an answer, so please consider, um, this as a solution to parking, snow removal, and improving driver visibility also in this busy intersection. Thank you.
Anyone else for the public hearing?
Hello, my name is Andrea Fussberg, and I, um, own Flower Works. So, um, one thousand seven and one thousand nine North Third Street. And, um, so we have parking behind our greenhouse, and that's the parking lot off of Park Street. And I'm already seeing this summer that it's much busier because the employees from Van Gogh's park back there. And I have known this parking lot for the last twelve years, and in winter it gets extremely icy and slippery. So there won't be people able to park as much as they do now. So parking spots will be missing, we won't know where to put our snow. So I really hope that you can find a solution for that because it's really gonna, um, change things with our parking and snow situation. Thank you.
Anyone else for the public hearing? Seeing no one else, public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Davis?
I move to adopt ordinance seven-sixteen, which amends City Code Chapter fifty-four zoning by changing the zoning designation of the properties at two-twenty-one and two-twenty-five West Park Street from medium-density residential to Third Street Corridor, transect four, general urban.
Thank you, do we have a second, Pro Tem Mayor?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Commissioner Davis, any discussion?
Yeah, I wish I could read those as well as our City Clerk does. Um, you know, I make this motion with a great deal of respect for the Planning Commission. It is, it's not my norm to go against the Planning Commission and their decision. And in this case, the Planning Commission really did their job. They vetted the request, they, they debated the minute details, and they searched for a solution that could, that could respect both parties, the, um, businesses and the neighbor. In the end, they did what they needed to do, what they legally needed to do, which was to deny the rezoning. You know, and as City Commissioners, as elected officials, we have the ability to consider this request in a greater or wider scope. And it's, it's within this greater community that I have in mind that I make this motion. You know, as our city documents note, we need parking for businesses away from a very busy Third Street. It's a safety issue. Additionally, this area's been used for parking for about eighteen years without a great deal of, without any really community concerns. And, and I do not feel that the rezoning is, is inconsistent with the residents across the street, one of which is already in the Third Street Corridor and others owned as multi-use. So it's with that, I'm asking my Commissioner, fellow Commissioners to consider rezoning this property.
Pro Tem Mayor, discussion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just have to say, um, I, you know, I, I really think Commissioner Davis has some great points on this. And one of the things I find really, um, impressive about this is the collective share of business owners in this area that are all kind of using this area in a rather collaborative approach and a friendly neighbor approach to assist each other and to make this work. Yes, it's been being used technically in a way it's not supposed to have been allowed, which we could correct with this motion. But I, I see nothing but benefit from allowing this, and I just see it causing unneeded harm if we were to deny this. And that's kind of where I'm at with this. Thank you.
Other Commissioners, Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I, I think that Commissioner Davis's motion is very reasonable. You know, as she said, I, I'm generally, uh, I'm also generally reluctant to go against what the Planning Commission recommends. But I, as Commissioner Davis noted, like, we on the City Commission are a board that makes policy decisions. And sometime, we are not robots who have to follow the Community Master Plan, right? Like, we can make decisions that just make sense. And in this case, I do think that deciding to allow the rezoning just makes sense. This is a, a use that has existed, from my understanding, for many years, decades even. And if anything, it, it seems like a bit of an oversight on the city's part that this wasn't, you know, kind of taken care of in the rezoning process as a pre-existing, non-conforming use. So, I, I personally think it makes sense to rezone it to the Third Street Corridor. I mean, an ancillary benefit of this, if we're thinking about this in the very long run, which is something we should be thinking about, right? Is that actually, you know, we, we are experiencing a housing crisis in the community, and in the very long run, the Third Street Corridor allows a wider range of housing types to be developed more easily than the medium-density residential district. So it's a small factor, but it's something that I considered as I was comparing the permissible land uses between the two districts. So, if that's helpful for anyone to know. But I will be supporting Commissioner Davis's motion.
Any other Commissioners, Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, looking, I, I guess it's, uh, it's truly pleasant to see the support to maintain that parking lot. I think we all understand the criticality of the Third Street. But with the view of history that I've had, we've had homes on Third Street disappear. Businesses have needed parking, they bought the property, they took the home down. Now, we know that the criticality we have in the city for residential housing, especially in that Third Street area, is high. So to lose a house simply to gain a parking lot is not good for the city in any way or for our citizens. So by doing what we're doing, what I think we're doing, at least what the motion is we're discussing, we should be able to maintain that parking and be able to move ahead from there. So, thank you, Your Honor, I think it's, uh, I think it's a good move forward.
Commissioner Hill?
Uh, thank you. Many of the points I wanted to make have already been made, but as has been noted, this isn't, this is, uh, the law catching up with the present practice. And in doing so, um, there are, there is care being taken to, um, make sure that the neighbors are aware. And I am, I, I second that, uh, or, or third or fourth of the collaboration and really appreciate how folks have worked together on that, uh, on this property. And, um, again, I'm very, usually very hesitant to go against the Planning Commission, but again, they, their purview is to look narrowly at what is very narrowly there on the law. And our job is to look bigger and broader, and for those reasons, I will be supporting this motion.
I think almost everything I would have said has been said. I guess I would just echo that I think the Planning Commission has done their job on this. I also have reservations about going against something that they voted on, but, um, we have different factors that we can and should take into consideration as the job of a Planning Commissioner is different than that of a City Commissioner. So I will also be supporting Commissioner Davis's motion. That being said, let's go ahead and have the roll call vote, City Clerk.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes, motion passes six to zero. Next, we have another public hearing, item four, water ordinance. This will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could we have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. The City Commission in two thousand twenty-one approved a contract with Davis and Davis Law Offices, PLC, to review and update the city's water ordinance. The current water use ordinance has not recently been updated and was in need of a legal and technical review. During the review of the water ordinance, it was also noted that a clarification was needed in the sewer use ordinance related to the timeline required for connecting to the public sewer. Tonight's public hearing was scheduled during the Commission's regular meeting of September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, following the public hearing, adopt ordinance seven-one-four, which amends City Code Chapter forty-eight, utilities. Alternatives, as determined by the Commission.
Again, this is a public hearing. Public hearing is now open on the water ordinance, if anyone would like to speak on this item. Anyone for the public hearing? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we adopt ordinance seven-one-four, which amends City Code Chapter forty-eight, utilities.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Bonzal, any discussion? Okay, Commissioner Davis? Any other Commissioners? Let's go ahead and conduct the roll call vote, City Clerk.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes, motion passes six to zero. Up next, we have the consent agenda, this will require a roll call vote. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Davis?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second? Pro Tem Mayor?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Any discussion? City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote again?
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes, motion passes six to zero. Onto new business, item six, Marquette Board of Light and Power lease agreement. City Clerk, could we have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. The Marquette Board of Light and Power, the BLP, has approached the city to request the use of city property for the installation of electric vehicle charging stations. If approved, the first installation site will be at the Lower Harbor parking lot. The lease also contains options for expansion to Lakeview Arena, Shyrus Park, and Clark Lambros Park. The term of the lease will be for three years and specifies that the installation, operation, maintenance, repair, and liability of leased property and charging units is the responsibility of the BLP. The rental rate is three hundred and seventy-five dollars per year per charging station, based on usage of five square feet of property, a rate of six dollars and twenty-five square, six dollars and twenty-five cents per square foot per month. The first read for this item was on September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Fiscal effect, the city of Marquette will receive thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents per month, three hundred and seventy-five dollars annually per charging station during the term of the lease agreement. Recommendation, approve the lease agreement with the Marquette Board of Light and Power for the installation of electric vehicle charging stations. Alternatives, as determined by the Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to approve the lease agreement with the Marquette Board of Light and Power for the installation of electric vehicle charging stations.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion?
Only that, I can see in the future, we're going to be doing a lot of this, so, it's a good step.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yeah, I, I think that, um, it makes sense to be investing in the future of transportation in our community. You know, I, I know I've had a couple of conversations with folks about, um, you know, past discussions or votes the City Commission has taken in favor of electric vehicles and electric vehicle infrastructure, where they've said, well, but it's, it's just not affordable for me or for most people. Like, why is the City Commission spending all their time on this issue? My response is that we didn't wait until motor vehicles were affordable for most Americans to start making investments because we knew that that was what the future was going to be. So I think it makes sense for us to start thinking five, ten, twenty years down the road. Most analysts project that in less than a decade, electric vehicles will achieve cost parity with new, uh, vehicles that have internal combustion engines. So, I think it makes sense.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Davis?
I just have a, a pretty simple question. And first of all, I, I support this and I agree with what my other Commissioners have said. But just out of curiosity, when we put the station in, will it be reserved for electric vehicles? Will anybody else be able to park there? I mean, you know, when we look at, um, parking, and that is a very busy parking lot, does it remove a parking spot? Or if an electric vehicle isn't using it, can someone else park there?
I believe it's still within an area that is also under, um, a paid parking system as well. So there's two components to that. Um, it's, I, I would have to really check with, um, our parking enforcement officer, too, on how we will be managing that. But essentially, I think first priority would be for those vehicles that would be charging, um, first. But we haven't looked through those details at this moment.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Davis, do you have anything else? Okay, Commissioner Hill?
Thank you. And to the point of how long it's going to take for electric vehicles to become a primary, become more into the majority, um, a story I like to tell is, um, this thing, this is an iPhone, um, an actual iPhone. iPhones have been out since two thousand and seven. There were no iPhones, there were cell phones, but there were no iPhones before two thousand and seven. That is fifteen years ago. Fifteen years from now is when Ford and General Motors have committed, committed to stop selling internal combustion engine cars. So, um, now I know some of the young folks in here, this is going, fifteen years seems like a long time. Those of us who are older know how quickly that time can go. And so, uh, we are already on this path, and as has been said, um, uh, bringing in this infrastructure and, and then determining how to go about managing it is something for us, we definitely want to be doing and be proactive about. Because, um, in fact, in two thousand and twenty-four, there are going to be at least five to ten vehicles for sale that will cost, um, thirty thousand dollars, which is a lot of money, but is much less than they cost now. And so, this, essentially, to use a different metaphor, this train has left the station and it's, um, and it's time for us to get on. I think another thing to, um, just one more point about electric vehicles is, yes, if you have a driveway, um, you are going to mostly charge your electric vehicle at home at night. You'll plug in your car at night. That's, that's what people do now, and that's what we're moving towards, is you'll in fact be, you'll be, you won't need external infrastructure because you'll be doing it at your own home, which is a big change from how we take care of vehicles now. But, um, for folks who live in, um, multi-unit dwell, multi-unit dwellings, visitors, um, and, um, visitors, and there will be, it's going to look different. And so, it is important to start to have that infrastructure, but at the same time, know that what's coming next is how we're going to get infrastructure at every home. And so, I'm applauding this, and I'm looking forward to how we develop this over time.
Any other comments or discussion from the Commission on this item? All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. Just making sure, no roll call vote needed. Okay, all in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Up next, we have item seven, City Hall Labor Union Wages. Could we have the background, please? Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. On October 25, 2021, the City Commission approved a new three-year agreement with the City Hall Employees Chapter of ASME Local 1852. The agreement included a 2% wage increase for year one and wage reopeners in 2022 and 2023. The parties have now agreed upon a 2% wage increase for year two, 2022, with a one-time $250 payment to each bargaining unit member. The city's bargaining team commends the City Hall unit of ASME for their willingness to work with us to negotiate a wage increase that is fair to the employees and the city. Fiscal effect: A 2% increase to wages in addition to a one-time $250 payment to each bargaining unit member equates to a cost of roughly $35,000. This will require a budget amendment. Recommendation: Approve the City Hall employees' 2% wage increase effective October 11, 2022, with a one-time payment to each bargaining unit member of $250. Alternatives: As determined by the Commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Pro Tem Mayor?
Thank you. I move to approve the City Hall employees' 2% wage increase effective October 11, 2022, with a one-time payment to each bargaining unit member of $250.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Pro Tem Mayor, any discussion?
Just that I'm very grateful for our city employees, and I'm glad we were able to find a compromise here that, you know, was both fair to our employees as well as to the city, given our current financial situation.
Commissioner Bonzal, any discussion?
You know, I think that we've spent a lot of time over the past year, really past couple of years, talking about trying to maintain city services. We provide good city services in the city of Marquette. Those services are provided by people. And if we can't maintain high-quality talent, then we're not going to be able to continue to provide high-quality services. So, I think this is, as Mayor Pro Tem Mayor said, a fair compromise, and I think in the city's current financial position, the best that we can do realistically. So, I really appreciate our employees being willing to, you know, make sacrifices along with us in a high-inflation environment with the cost of living rising. It's not easy, but we're doing the best that we can, just as they are. So, I just want to echo what Mayor Pro Tem Mayor said about how much I appreciate the work that they're doing to serve our community. They're not doing it for the money, right? So, they're doing it because they love our community.
Any discussion from the other commissioners? I would just like to thank the bargaining team on both the city staff side and on the City Hall Labor Union side for coming to terms with the contract pretty shortly after we were able to pass our budget, and wanted to express gratitude towards the employees for all that they continue to do to provide those essential city services here. Let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Next, we have item eight, which is modified to be the Supervisory Labor Union Wages. City Clerk, background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. On October 25, 2021, the City Commission approved a new two-year agreement with the Supervisory Employees Chapter of ASME Local 1852. The agreement included a 2% wage increase for year one and a wage reopener in 2022. The parties have now agreed upon a 2% wage increase for year two, 2022, with a one-time $250 payment to each bargaining unit member. The city's bargaining team commends the supervisory unit of ASME for their willingness to work with us to negotiate a wage increase that is fair to the employees and the city. Fiscal effect: A 2% increase to wages in addition to a one-time $250 payment to each bargaining unit member equates to a cost of roughly $13,300. This will require a budget amendment. Recommendation: Approve the Supervisory Employees' 2% wage increase effective October 11, 2022, with a one-time payment to each bargaining unit member of $250. Alternatives: As determined by the Commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to approve the Supervisory Employees' 2% wage increase effective October 11, 2022, with a one-time payment to each bargaining unit member of $250.
Do we have a second? Pro Tem Mayor?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion?
Well, I think as with the previous item, we well recognize the importance of city workers, the tremendous work and effort that they put forward for the citizens of Marquette. We wish we could certainly, we reward them better than what we're doing with 2%, but I think they all understand, from a budgetary point of view, where we are and the challenges we're trying to work our way out of. So, let's work for the future, guys. Thank you, Your Honor.
Pro Tem Mayor?
I wouldn't add too much more. Same terms as the last agreement, I just want to again express my gratitude to our bargaining team as well as to our employees, and it's great to see some unity between these two.
Any other discussion from the Commission? I won't bother repeating myself. I feel the same about all of our employees, and those groups that are able to come to terms are much appreciated. All right, let's take a vote. All in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, last, under new business, number nine, Community Master Plan Steering Committee. City Clerk, could we have the background, please? Or is there not a background? There is.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
As part of the Community Master Plan process, the appointment of a steering committee is considered to be of vital importance to ensure that there is project oversight and participation from a broad representation of the community. The steering committee is recommended to be comprised of the community members on the attached roster. It is recommended that the steering committee be appointed for a period ending October 11, 2023. This will allow contingency time and time to market the plan after it's completed. Fiscal effect: None by this action. Recommendation: Establish a master plan steering committee for the purpose of community representation and project oversight. The committee shall be in place from today's date until October 11, 2023. The membership of the committee shall be those community members on the attached roster. Alternatives: As determined by the Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we establish a master plan steering committee for the purpose of community representation and project oversight. The committee shall be in place from today's date until October 11, 2023. The membership of the committee shall be those community members on the attached roster.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Bonzal, any discussion?
None. I do have a brief question for city staff. So, given that, you know, just the wording of the background on this agenda item, it sounds like by next fall, basically this time next year, we expect to not only have a new community master plan completed, but also be in the process of educating the community about what's in it, correct?
Yes.
Awesome. Cool. Thank you. That's reassuring. I just know that we got a, I just know that we got a little bit of a late start on it. And so, it's cool that we still feel that we can be on track to achieve, to meet some of those timelines we established earlier. So, thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
I just want to acknowledge what an important document this is, and the importance of the process that we will be using over the next year. And I'm grateful to the regular citizens that are representing different organizations, that are willing to serve on this and give up their time. And I am actually excited about being part of this.
Any other discussion from the Commission? Commissioner Hill?
And in addition, this is the steering committee, so it's going to help work with the outside contracting organization that we've hired at the previous meeting. But this is absolutely also an invitation for the entire community to join in the conversation of what our vision and what we want the future of Marquette to look like. So, I'm excited at folks, these folks who are going to help set direction, but know that in addition to educating what's in it, what's really important is that folks get involved to write at them, to help contribute to what's in it as we develop it. So that, I think, is, we have, and we've hired a good firm that has some very good ways to make sure that folks are engaged. So I'm excited about the process as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I'm sure it's an oversight, but I see no one representing the cultural side of the city.
We can maybe, I'm going to look to our city manager for maybe some comment there.
So, there's not, what you're probably referring to is perhaps a named person for specifically arts and culture, but within our staff, Department Head of Community Services, John Swenson, is going to be the one that acts as that liaison in engaging the conversations in a more direct manner with arts and culture, employing them, and making sure there's proper representation.
Okay, so John's going to represent arts and culture, then?
This is only the steering committee, and so he will be the one to really be acting as that liaison. So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion from the Commission? I just wanted to thank Mayor Pro Tem Mayor and Commissioner Davis for serving on behalf of the Commission, and all of those folks listed on the document, which is on the last page of our agenda packet, which is available online for serving in this critical role. Let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. That brings us to our second public comment session of the evening. Three minutes, name and physical address, unless you've already stated it at this meeting. Go ahead and approach the center podium if you'd like to make a public comment.
I guess Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield, just habit. So, at this point, I've said this before about what we call the master plan. I really don't like the term "master", because you've proven tonight that you don't actually follow it when you want to avoid it. So, by all means, make the plans. Let's make the steering committees, but let's give it dates. The 2023 to 2027 master plan, or community plan, just call it a community plan. But it's disheartening to say that here's a master plan, and yet, we're not going to follow it because the Planning Commission gave us something that we didn't like to do. And that's your prerogative. I'm not denying any of this. This is all legal, and it's all applicable. What I'm asking is that we stop calling something a master anything. We have changes. There are five years, there are 10 years, there are things that come up, like charging stations. So, to switch gears a little bit, I was, my question about the charging stations is how many cars or how many vehicles can be charged at one time? Are they one off, so one parking spot per meter, or can we have two? From what I understand, charging an electric vehicle takes about two hours for a full charge, which is why they're being placed at places like parks and other activities. But that's two hours of paying for parking as well as a upgrade, or a charge. So, my question becomes, who gets the money for that charge? Is it a city fund, or is it going directly to the Board of Light and Power? This relates to, where do they get their power from? I mean, we see a group up here asking for diversity from fossil fuels, and our Board of Light and Power just put in a major natural gas power plant. They also have solar panels. My question to you and to the steering committee for this master plan, how do we increase solar panel usage? How do we increase renewable energy usage, if indeed, we are going to be charging home, or charging our cars at home? If I'm charging it from the main grid, which the Board of Light and Power gets a majority, or 40% of their power from the main grid, are we not, in a way, subtly enforcing fossil fuels as the source of electricity? I think we have a great power plant coming off the lake, both wind and tidal power. I think those should be explored in part of this committee, or at least the future of Marquette. But again, I have, the real question comes down to, how many, per station, can we charge at one time? Thank you for your time.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing no further public comment, public comment is now closed. Brings us to comments from the Commission. We'll start with Commissioner Stonehouse.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of quick hits, if I can. Master plan is a very standard planning document terminology. It has nothing to do with that plan being the final execute plan of anything. It's simply the top plan of a series of plans. So, it's, again, a term commonly applied within the planning environment. Solar panels, first I heard that they were not all committed to. I find that interesting. When they went in, they went in with great enthusiasm. And the BLP, I think, was talking about the absolute salesmanship that would go on to get everybody to buy into that. Individuals can buy a panel, and by that, they're using clean electricity and lowering their own individual footprint. So I think that's worthy of kind of follow-up with the BLP to see worth what's actually happening with that. The other item is certainly, it's a good step forward, I think, as we begin to have the process in place in a more logical basis for establishing charging stations in the city. And it's good to see the BLP taking that mission on and hopefully growing it as the need for them increases. In other words, doing it as a lockstep opportunity. We've had a few in town for a number of years. I don't know how well-used they've been, but this certainly presents a different opportunity, and hopefully, hopefully, a good one. For the audience, the city is not in the power business. This board does not control the power in the city of Marquette. By charter, that is the power, I mean electricity. By charter, that is all under the Board of Light and Power and is a separately freestanding organization. So, we really have no right to tell them how to conduct their business, no more than they have a right to tell us how to conduct our business. Our sole interface is to approve any increases in power rate. That's the only check that this board has on the Board of Light and Power by charter. Can we change that by election of the people? Yes, we can. Should we do that? I don't know. That's a whole different discussion. Other net, Your Honor, I think, I think I've said everything that needs to be said. Thank you.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just, you know, echo, and kind of expand on Commissioner Stonehouse's comments about renewable energy and about transitioning to a clean energy economy. You know, I mean, you're all very passionate about this, and I'm sure you're studying it already, but like, really, the center of action for the clean energy transition that I think gets overlooked oftentimes are our state utility boards and our local boards of light and power, when we have municipally-owned electric utilities like here in Marquette. So like, I think it'd be awesome to engage with the Board of Light and Power about what kind of long-term strategies can we implement locally, and maybe start thinking about what can we do at the state level to make it easier to build solar and wind and things like that in Michigan. The, with regards to, I mean, to divestment from fossil fuels, I really appreciate the well-researched arguments that you all presented, and I'd be curious to learn more about it. Frankly, it's not something I'm an expert on by any means, but, you know, I appreciate you all taking the time to come talk to us, and open to further conversations about that. You know, recognizing that first and foremost, like, we have a responsibility to retirees who spent their lives working for and serving our community, and who need to have security in their retirement and their old age. Like, that always has to be the number one priority. But if we can find a way to make those two goals work together, I think that'd be, that'd be great. With regards to the Community Master Plan, I also just wanted to note, you know, first of all, I wanted to thank our planning staff for all the legwork that they've done to get us to this point. I'm really excited about the steering committee that we have, and about the public engagement process that will be forthcoming over the next year. Really hope people get involved and like, show up to those public hearings, and to those town halls, and other, you know, fill out online surveys, do everything that they can to make sure that their voice is heard as we're deciding what do the next, like, five, 10 years of our community look like. And I also just want to specifically note that I would really like to see a engagement component around this master plan, specifically targeting youth voices, actually, especially the voices of people who are too young to vote right now. the voices of people who are too young to vote right now, because their voices often get neglected and left out of these conversations, even though arguably the decisions we make in rooms like this one will impact them more than anybody else. So I think that that would be very important and maybe could be a way to begin a longer-term, more sustainable form of youth engagement in the city government, like a youth commissioner or something like that that we've talked about. So that's all I have to say tonight. Appreciate everybody showing up to talk to us about this incredibly important issue of climate change, and thanks to the mayor and my colleagues for an efficient meeting.
I have no comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I did want to respond to a couple of public comments, just some thoughts I had while people were speaking. I always love seeing people closer to my age coming to meetings because that's not typically something you see a lot, and I love the enthusiasm, the passion, and I hope you keep that up. And I hope you also take the suggestion to go to groups like the Board of Light and Power because, as Commissioner Stonehouse pointed out, we can't be dictating how they do their job. The only other aspect with this I really wanted to mention was, as far as like our pension boards, city attorney, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we have no legal authority to tell them how to manage those funds, correct? That's the whole purpose of those boards, really, is so that we're not doing that.
You are correct, and they have a fiduciary obligation to maximize the funds in that, you know, in those pension funds for the beneficiaries. But we do not have the authority to tell them how to manage those. That's correct.
I thought so. Thank you. I will say I have my own investment account, and I manage my own retirement account, and it is divested of all fossil fuels. It's a little challenging because you have to be very selective with things at times, but, you know, I understand and I'm on board with what you're saying. It's just not something we necessarily have the authority to do. And, you know, we've been making numerous steps to move forward in a positive direction as far as our net zero goal, but, you know, that goal is for 2050, and we approved it last year. So out of the 29 years we gave ourselves, we're one year in, so we're working on it. But again, thank you all for coming here and sharing your passion with us. I did want to comment on one aspect about the master planning thing, well, I guess two. I, I'm very excited about it, and I want to thank my colleagues for entrusting Commissioner Davis and I to be a part of that process. But I wanted to comment that we made a separate motion earlier in the night that was not in keeping with our current kind of guiding document. But I believe that document is 20 years old now or so? Previous time we've gone through this whole process, I mean, 10 years? Is it 10 years?
10 years.
Okay. I mean, sometimes things, when we're going towards the very end of that, we're starting a new process now, I mean, it's, if anything, it is almost the perfect time for us to make a call like that, as the document is clearly no longer the most up-to-date document. That's why we're starting this new process. And I just thought that perspective was important to keep in mind. But, thank you.
Commissioner Hill?
Thank you. Yeah, a meeting where we got all the local government done. We paid our employees, we voted on permitting cultural events, we paid for maintenance, and we took care of a permit issue that had gone through the entire public process. So local government, local government rocks on days like this, and it's exciting to actually see things move forward in these ways. I do want to comment on, in terms of climate change, the state of Michigan has a Michigan Healthy Climate Plan that was adopted in April of 2022. And not only is there this far-off goal of 2050, it's important to recognize that there's an interim, two interim goals, that we've reduced our carbon emissions by 28% from 2005, I think is the number, by 2025. So there's a 2025 goal and a 2030 goal. And part of what would be helpful to getting to 2050, which isn't that far for, you folks will be our ages by then, or my age, anyway, and so it's not that far off. But setting those interim goals are also really important as a way to make sure you're getting to where you want to be. And so the goal of 28% reduction by 2025, and as someone who does this for my living, I can tell you that that 28% was chosen because basically we're already there. So don't think that you have to set these big, big... And so there is good news and there's positive direction, and it is very encouraging as someone who's been on this board now for four years, how much we're talking about climate change now versus how much we talked about climate change when it came on. And so I think the snowball is getting bigger, to use a very UP metaphor, and that we have good examples to learn from. There is so much already happening in Michigan, and in particular, Holland, Michigan, also has a municipal utility, and it is not that much bigger than our utility here in Marquette. Hint, hint. So, wow, we do not have direct control of, as has been said, of the Marquette Board of Light and Power. There is some great examples to learn from, including the city of Holland and the city of Traverse City, both of which are doing really great work in thinking about how to do this and how to make this really viable. There is existing technology. This can be done with existing technology. So that's exciting and good news, and the question is how do we get up to speed? And how do we, folks who are working hard in their day jobs to make sure that the lights are turned on right now, how do we help them? Or where does the space come to help us step back and figure out how we're going to make the change while we're driving the bus at the same time? So I think that is fundamentally the challenge we have in front of us right now, is learning from the folks who are doing it in other parts of the state and also in Wisconsin. There's some terrific examples. And then how to help the folks who, again, are fully tasked and fully working, you know, in their jobs to just keep the lights on in the existing system as we move to a system that's going to end up being fairly different, as I mentioned, where we are all going to be charging basically our own vehicles and providing our own energy, and electric sales, which have gone down every year in Marquette since 2008, are actually going to start ticking back up. And what does that mean for the BLP, for example? So, exciting days ahead. Thank everyone for being here, and I'm done. Thanks.
I want to say thank you to the group of divest fossil fuel folks for coming and speaking. I always love hearing from our community's young people, college students like yourselves, and what you're passionate about, what you're working on. Definitely good perspective as we move through a myriad of challenges related to climate change. I don't have any fast or easy answers for you. I think my fellow commissioners and our city manager have summed up our response at this point, but I would encourage you to continue reaching out if you have a related but slightly different idea that maybe is something we can tackle right away. We are listening. We are trying to find ways to be proactive where we can. Thank you for coming. I wanted to take a moment and recognize a belated Indigenous Peoples' Day, which was yesterday. In October of 2019, the Marquette City Commission unanimously approved a motion to designate the second Monday of October annually as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Marquette. So there was a holiday yesterday. It was Indigenous Peoples' Day. We were not able to have a meeting for related reasons, so that's why our meeting is tonight. And I wanted to just acknowledge that the city of Marquette was founded and built on lands first inhabited by Indigenous peoples of the region, and we acknowledge and honor those members of our community. It's really important. I know there were some fantastic events yesterday, and I appreciate the fact that we've been able to pivot and honor our cultural history here. I look forward to doing that more as time goes on. Wanted to remind the public that we have an election coming up on November 8th. If you have absentee ballots, you can mail those in or drop them off anytime. There's secure boxes outside City Hall and some other locations you can find on the city website. And just a reminder that there are two spots on this commission on that ballot, and there is also other seats such as state rep, senate, county commission, school board, all sorts of things that make an impact on our lives here in the city of Marquette. So encourage you to vote. And related, on November 14th will be our organizational meeting here for the City Commission after that general election, where we will elect a mayor and a mayor pro tem. And as I have stated, and I'm holding true to my word, that I will not be running for mayor again, so someone else will have that honor. And I only have one more meeting that I will be running, because the last meeting is started off by our city clerk and then taken over by the next mayor and mayor pro tem. So just putting it on folks' radars for the public, because I know that can be a little bit of a shock that that's done here at the city commission level. The city commission votes on our mayor and our mayor pro tem at the first meeting in November. So watch for that. And that is all I had for tonight. City Manager?
Just going to make a few reminders here. Brush collection will start on October 24th, and we'll go through October 28th, and then we will move into leaf collection, starting on October 31st. Which also brings me to another reminder as well, that our commission meeting dates are off a little bit this month due to the Halloween event on October 31st, so our next commission meeting will be that October 24th date. So keep that in mind. And then lastly, they have community office hours, so you can have a casual conversation with me over a cup of coffee tomorrow, actually, from 10 to noon at the Peter Wright Public Library. So please stop on by, and again, it's just an opportunity to have more of a casual conversation and just kind of get to know a few of the department heads that do attend and a commissioner or two. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. We adjourned at 7:18 PM. Thanks, everyone.